All right, we call the committee to a whole meeting for Monday, October 7th, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gatling. Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedved.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. Audience comments? And then, uh, trustee comments? Right, item one in discussion, uh, Steve?
Thank you. Item number one, which Brandon just nodded because I don't think he thought I knew how to put the PowerPoint up, but I got it. Um, is the 2025 annual road program and Brandon's going to talk about how we pick our roads every year and we're going to talk about the upcoming road program for next year.
All right, thank you, Steve. Um, so first, just a little overview on the scoring that we use for our roads. Um, it goes from a hundred being best to zero being the worst on their seven categories. Uh, as you go down, the more maintenance and more expensive it gets to maintain the roads. Once you get to uh, serious, very poor, those are more expensive, obviously, than doing the repairs when you're in the poorer fair area. On the next slide. Um, so here's the current scores for the pavement indices for about the east half of the village. Um, you can see we've gotten pretty much everything east of the river primarily done the past, right, about four or five years. So most of those are all in the, uh, the good range there. Um, there is still a few, uh, streets that are, you can see in the red there that are in the very poor. Um, so a couple of those will be targeting this year as well as, uh, go the next slide. Um, you can see out further west, a lot of the roads are getting into the very poor, poor categories. Um, with, uh, between Orchard and Randall, we had focus on some of those streets south of Randall last year. Then, uh, north of Oak, uh, about five, six years ago, and those are still in, in good shape. Um, you can also see at the south there Orchard Gateway, the, the long red line. Um, that one, we have a STP grant, which is from the federal government to help cover that. And that project may also happen this upcoming summer, but there is some right away acquisition that depending on how quickly that moves, if that'll happen this next construction season or the, the following one. Um, so the road maintenance strategy is, uh, first, we use these results in formulating kind of what streets to look at each year. And from there we will go drive, take a look at them as well as kind of looking at the age of the area. If we have water main replacements or any other kind of utility needs that are upcoming. Um, so doing this helps us budget and also protect what's coming up in the next few years. So we primarily use this, uh, method with the PCI scores and updating those on a yearly basis. And then also having a consultant that specializes in the scoring come do it every three to five years. It's been, uh, about four years since we've last done it. So we're probably looking at having that done this next, uh, summer, have the consultant come in. I'll turn it over to Jason to talk about the funding.
So the funding, funding for the annual roads comes from three, what we call our base revenues. One being our now 1% non-home rule sales tax, which brings in about 2.8 million. Electricity tax, 370,000 and the natural gas tax, 220,000. So altogether about $3.4 million going forward annually, annually, um, comes into our capital projects fund. Um, just reminded that non-home rule sales tax, which we're going to use to repay the debt, um, that was, that was going to be issued. Um, that's about, that's actually less than the 1.3 million, it's about 1.24. So meaning of that 3.4 million coming in, a little over 2.1 million now goes towards roads and other capital projects that we have kind of freed up for those. Um, general fund transfers over the last five years have been 12, 12.3 million dollars. So a lot of money from the general fund has come in to help fund our capital projects. In fact, this most current fiscal year, 24, we've seen our fund balance reserve go from 13.2 to 14.5 million dollars. Um, some of that has been spent in a way, the police department debt that got paid off was used, was using some of this capital projects fund. So it's 2.7 million dollars. Plus as part of that budget, when we are issuing that debt to pay for the building, some of that building was going to be paid with our capital reserve of about 4.5 million dollars. So when you're looking at that 14 and a half million dollar reserve we have in there now, it's really about 7.3 million dollars with money either we're planning on spending for, for the building or we've already spent to pay off the debt. The 24 road program is in our 25 budget, about 2.1 million dollars, um, used, using capital projects fund, um, current revenues and reserve balances. And then when we're looking forward, really kind of targeting that 1.8 million dollars plus or minus, um, just to really kind of keep it in line with revenues and preserve that fund balance, uh, going forward.
So for the next five years, you can see the projection of the dollar amounts estimated for each of the next five year road programs. And along with this current year that we just completed, um, that averages out to about that 1.8 million that Jason was talking about. So the map on the screen is showing the east half of the village and it shows, uh, for this next upcoming road program in red, the a couple of streets on the east side that we'll be doing, which are Lynn Court, uh, Aspen Court, which we're also looking at replacing the water main on that street early in the spring to then be able to, to pave that within the road program. Um, as well as the rest of the, that town home subdivision off the, off a butterfield there. And there are a couple of streets for 2026 on the east side that are, uh, projected, uh, push those back a year due to the fact that Aurora packing, that's still under construction, has some water main tie-ins at the south end of Grant Streets. We didn't want to start that until that was all completely done. And then for the west part of the village, that's where a lot of the work's going to be happening these next five years. Um, again, the reds for this upcoming year, which we're looking at doing a part of Deer Path that's starting to get into poor condition. Um, as well as West Mooseheart Road and a cul-de-sac off of that. And then moving further west, doing the Lake Run, uh, subdivision, south of Tanner Road. Then also starting up in the Remington Landings area in the northwest corner there. And then kind of progressing through, uh, Remington, uh, Tanner Trails and Mirador heading east. While keeping off some of the main roads that a lot of the truck traffic will be using, uh, to pave those last once all the side streets are paved. That's kind of what we're projecting out for the next five years. And here's just a summary of the streets that we have planned for this next year, uh, showing what their scores are and what that condition is. Um, so the average PCI score in these areas are 40, which is categorized as very poor. Um, and the estimated cost again for this project is about 1.84 million, which will get 2.83 miles of road, uh, resurfaced.
If I can just go back real quick here, you, you might notice that there are some areas here that are kind of one offs. Mooseheart Road, for instance, is going to be done this year and it, it's a connector road that's in pretty bad shape. But with Autumn Ridge starting, um, they're roads, they're not on the map, um, shown yet. But that subdivision, as you are aware, is, is going to be developing soon. And when that does, those roads are already 20 years plus. So they're like 25 years old. So, but there's no reason that we would want to pave the road while we know they're going to be building 50 homes there. So things like that, we take into account and say, okay, the roads need to be done, but there's no one living on them now. Let's wait till the construction ends and then go back and do them. Same thing goes with Moose Lake. You might've saw that on the previous slide there, uh, Moose Lake. And we get there. There we go. Moose Lake, um, has a lot of red roads, but they're also building out phase three and finishing up phase two of those houses there. So it's on our radar, but once again, we don't want to start building new roads while they're ripping everything up over there. So we're just keeping an eye on it for now.
You know, what's the, uh, what's the criteria for making these, like some of these streets red? Uh?
So it's the amount of distresses on the street. So it could be how severe the cracking is, if there's also ruts in addition to the cracking. To kind of all these conditions contribute to like a calculation based on the percentage of the pavement area that has the cracking. It kind of all boils it down into a score kind of based on.
The PCI score that they get is done when they drive all the roads and they video them. And then they assess it by actually visualizing the road. So it, so they've, every one of those scores was given to us by a company. And then what Brandon will do is we degrade the scores over a course of a couple of years. So we know that road should fail at a certain pace, but sometimes what happens is we have three, four, five years of road programs thought out ahead. But a lot of times roads change, some roads, you know, it's very possible that a road three years from now will degrade so fast that it has to be moved up uh, to the, you know, an upcoming road program. So Brandon does relook at that every year when we go through the roads. This is a roadmap, but it's not always a guarantee that these are the exact roads. For instance, uh, Wood Lake is, would, wouldn't the lakes states or wouldn't the lakes appear that cul-de-sac and that area that, uh, Brandon showed that we're doing, that was supposed to be paved last year. But there was a reason that we waited for it and part of it was because we needed to do water main work there. So we decided let's wait till the water mains done and then we'll do the road. So sometimes things get bumped here or moved back a year or up here.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, so at this point, Brandon, what he'll do is he'll actually, oh, start designing the roads and getting them ready to bid out and usually what it starts in about February.
We aim for February or March to open.
Great, thank you. Item two, Steve?
Okay, item number two. There's so many PowerPoints. I'm sorry, hang on one second. Hey Dave, can you come over for a second? Can I just open the point? It'll be in my three cents.
You know, during this low, um, Brandon, I guess this to you is 31 is the worst street. Can we do anything about that?
State, it's a state route.
Yeah, I know it is. That's, I know.
State funds.
Yeah. So yeah, Illinois Department of Transportation determines that and they do come out with like a multi-year program projecting what projects they have planned and yet to date, they haven't shown that being in the next five years, unfortunately. So.
How bad must a road be?
Yeah.
Before they come and fix it? I'm curious.
Yeah, it's kind of.
Be bad.
Somehow Batavia got their section, some, something figured out because they're reconfiguring the route.
Yeah, I think.
They got state funds.
Yeah, because they're, they're making, what do they call that? A highway diet or whatever road diet to allow for.
They're doing the restriping project. It's actually underway right now. They're grinding off the old, but they're not doing any pavement like that. I don't believe there's any resurfacing or anything. They're just grinding off the old stripes and going down to the three lane.
Do some work on the street on 31 in front of the funeral home, if they're south of Wilson. Do some resurfacing there or some, there's something there for a while. Lanes were blocked and whatnot last year.
Mayor, do you want to go to item? For some reason, the computers didn't sync. My file didn't show up on my computer up here. So.
See, this was the PowerPoint you weren't going to be able to find, not the one before.
If you want, we can go to item three and I can bring up.
Good, item three, please.
All right. So item number free, uh, three tonight is, this is our economic development strategy that we've been working on for a while. And if you remember, we, we talked about, um, we talked about having, uh, incentive policies and that was part of this a couple of months ago. So what we decided to do is based on that, we were able to finish the rest of the strategy. This strategy is really, it, it's a way to, a lot of the stuff we're doing already to some degree. Um, but we want to immortalize it in a way like where it's almost like a strategic plan for economic development. So this way we're getting the approval of the board. This will be approved by resolution. And therefore it'll be a policy, if you will, like of how we, how we go after certain businesses, which businesses are the priority. Um, I'll give you an example of something Mike's working on right now that we base off of, of, of this, which is, you know, he's working with a business right now who's got a couple of restaurants interested in their space. And Mike is talking about possible incentives to retrofit their building to accommodate a drive-through. Um, based on the board's feedback of the type of restaurants you're looking for, and both restaurants want a drive-through. And they're both small chains, regional chains. So Mike's like, okay, well here's, I know the board wants this. This is something we've talked about. So the incentive policy says that we want to incentivize restaurants when it makes sense. So he met with them and they started that process of discussing the next steps. So with that, uh, just a little background, I won't go over this too long, but, uh, the strategic plan calls for a, a comprehensive, uh, economic policy for the village. Uh, the village's comprehensive plan also has several different areas in town. They come sub areas broken up where they list things to do to help, uh, rebuild those areas, uh, to generate economic development, future growth, uh, residential growth, pedestrian friendly growth. And then we, if you remember, when we did our strategic planning workshop, uh, together, we ended up having the board give us some idea of what you looked for in economic development. And we took all three of those and we put it together into this strategy. Uh, here is the, the contents really are four major sections. We didn't put introduction in there, but so we have the incentive policy, which you've already looked at. We broke up, um, areas in our TIP districts. Then we have business attraction, business retention. Thanks, Dave. Uh, the incentive types. So I'm going to go over this very briefly because you already went through all this. The, these are the types of incentives that we typically offer, um, and the most common ones that we use here are through TIF, tax increment financing and sales tax reimbursement. And then the qualified uses, as you remember, what we wanted to do was we wanted to ask the board very specifically, what are the types of uses that you actually want to see and which uses do you want us to not incentivize at all? Meaning if somebody calls us and says, I'll just use one, a tobacco shop. Hey, we would like an incentive. We can now tell them, the board has approved a policy that says we will not incentivize tobacco shops. So don't even ask. Um, but on the, on the flip side, if someone comes in and they want to do a car dealership, we said, yes, that's a qualified use. The board has identified that as a use that you're willing to incentivize. These qualified expenses are the types of expenses that we can consider when creating an incentive package. And once again, we already went through this, these are the individual, but the most important part of the incentive policy are the, these are the, uh, the fundamental policy of the board right here, which some of them's are, the things should be done ahead of time, right? So if someone wants an incentive, they're supposed to come to us before they break ground on their project. Um, or before they get their building permit issued, uh, they should come to us ahead of time and not in the, not, you know, after they've already started their project saying they need money. So that's one thing that we wanted to put in stone here. Um, we also talked about, there's some very basic stuff here, like every TIF request has to follow state law. We put it in there, obviously it has to follow state law no matter what, but we just want to remember, it's a reminder that everything has to follow TIF guidelines and state laws. Um, but then if you see here to the last bullet point, this is the car dealership when we, we've done several times. If we have an existing property that wants an incentive, we want to ensure that that incentive is tied into previous revenue so that we know the village isn't going to lose money. So in those cases, you say, what were your sales here? Okay. Well, we're gonna, if you're expanding this dealership, we're going to base this amount of money, the village is going to retain this amount every year. And you are going to retain a split after that. So this way the village gets their guaranteed sales tax money every year. And then you're actually sharing in the growth, which is the whole point of the incentive. Some of the other things too, um, a real big one is the first bullet point on this, uh, where the village will not accept requests made for front loaded debt. Uh, we changed the word before it was, uh, I can't remember exactly how it was written, but basically by front loaded debt, we're saying we don't want somebody to come in here and say, hey, I'm going to build this project. But I want the village to take out $5 million in debt and we'll pay you back with the proceeds of the project over time. Um, we've talked to the board about that in the past. The staff here has never, uh, pushed that, some towns do. But we haven't because there's an inherent risk to it. Um, sometimes developments don't go through or they fail. And then the village is the one that's holding the general obligation debt for the payment. And then video gaming, I'm just pointing out one other big one that we had a discussion on. Video gaming may be allowed once an incentive is complete or has been forfeited, meaning if you want video gaming, you can't apply for an incentive because it sounded like the board stance was video gaming is the incentive to try to help your business thrive in its first years. So if you want video gaming, fine, but if you want to build out, you're going to have to build out, make sure the incentive expires before you actually start video gaming. You have to choose at the beginning. So I'm not going to read all these, but I, what we did is it's in your packet. There is, it's, it's a good 15 pages or so. And, and basically what it is is we tried to, it's like our purchasing policy in a way, um, you know, Jason has a excellent purchasing policy, but it's very wordy. So what we wanted to do is create graphics. So it was nice and easy to reference things and, and just put things in matrices and charts that we can update periodically. Um, and so in this case, these are just the objectives for the, for the United TIF. These are things that we've talked about with the, the board in the past. And if you look here, we break them down into categories. There's, there's objectives. There's the action we'll take and then the timeframe in which we'll do it. So like if you, I'll give you one right here on the bottom where it splits, says encouragement for redevelopment of commercial properties adjacent to block one at 31 and 56. And then you see where it says ongoing or as needed. So as needed would be as anytime we see an opportunity for a piece of land that makes sense to futuring that development area, we would bring it to the board. Ongoing means we're always going to continue monitoring that area to see when a piece of property might become available that makes sense. And then it goes on to, ahead, Mike break it up specifically here. The second part of the chart starts where it says use tax increment financing as funding. And then these are all the different things that we, we'd use TIF district funding and when we would use it and, and how often we would, uh, do it. So one of the things that was interesting is where it says, uh, action under private redevelopment. Here's something like, it should, it should go without saying that villagers should do this. But we wanted to put it more on a schedule. So it says things like distribute marketing literature to all, but you know, property and business owners located in United TIF. June 1st of each year. Why do we put a specific date in? It's because if you look at a TIF district, it's a life of 23 years. Businesses, a lot of times won't even realize that they have TIF available to them. Whatever reason, four years go by, maybe it's the new business owner buys a property, didn't realize it was in a TIF. By sending something out every year, it's a reminder that we have a facade grant, uh, rebate program. In my last village, I remember when the TIF was closing out, their downtown TIF in the 23rd year. They made a, a big notice in the paper and everything that's all these businesses. And Mike, just so you know, one of our tips is expiring. And Mike just sent letters to that TIF, to those businesses, reminding them that this is expiring. And the whole point was to tell them, if you didn't take advantage of it now, it's going away, take advantage. And they saw gigantic amount of use that last year because people, I'll do it next year. I'll do it next year until you tell them it's going away after this year. And they're like, wait, I could have got $20,000 for my parking lot. I didn't realize that or I put it off too long. Now I have. So we're hoping to see some people, this is specifically the Route 31 TIF south of 88. We're hoping to see some businesses say, hey, I would love to use some of that remaining TIF funding. And this is the entire chart for Route 31 TIF because the United TIF is everything that's north of 88 basically and, and covers a lot around the river, around 31, all the way up to our, almost to Mooseheart. The 31 TIF is part of the old TIF that was cut out from the new one. And this is everything basically south of 88 where we've already done a lot of projects like fix Smoke Tree up and, and then, but you know, some of the businesses like the, uh, the hotels over there that have asked for money over the years. So right now we don't have many things left because there aren't, there's only 10 months left before it expires. It expires in August of next year. So here's a, a section, business attraction. The biggest thing we tried to get from the board was the ability to have targeted uses. Like what does the board actually want? What do people want in our town? And you know, we always hear the same things. Dining, right? Restaurants are always, it's always number one. Everyone wants restaurants. So we, we had that from the board, lodging. Uh, we've had hotels has always been on our list, um, and entertainment. And I think for people are, if you notice retail wasn't a targeted use. Uh, when we've had our conversations with the board, it's not saying that retail isn't desired. What we're saying is retail is pretty common. That's the most common form of economic development you'll see. If Mike's going to go out there, unless there's a very specific store, really it's about restaurants, hotels to grow our, uh, you know, our nighttime population to frequent restaurants and entertainment uses. And that is in a way the new retail. Because as we've seen without box stores really, uh, going up, great point would be Slick City opened up this week in the old Best Buy. Former retail, now it's an entertainment venue. You're seeing that a lot more common. Um, as people online shop, these places are sitting vacant unless they're reused. So we are looking for things and the board has mentioned over there, sports complexes and event centers and venues and things like that. So we are looking to do more of that. Um, Mike, we put in there, one of the other things we put in was employee contributors. If you want to grow economic development, there's, you know, five or six factors that you look at. You look at your daytime population, you look at your, the amount of, um, your socioeconomics, like your household median income. You look at how many cars are on each road each day at what times. And you look at the densities, where is the, you know, where is your five mile density? And, and you start looking at all those things. And one of the big things though is if you want restaurants, especially restaurants, restaurants don't open in places that don't have daytime population because they don't have a lunch crowd done. So what you need to do in order to build that is you have to have more businesses that have employees. You know, there's a reason off the interstate that that whole corridor along 88, when you're in Oak Brook and, and Lombard and those areas and Downers Grove is because they have corporate headquarters up and down that, that whole strip. All those people go to lunch. That's why there's so many restaurants in there. So that's one of the reasons why they have that density. And when you look at things like these types of uses, you say, well, it would be helpful if you knew exactly where they can go in town. So the strategy calls to create a, a listing of all of the acreages that we have available in our, so basically what that means is Mike will look at a strip center, for instance. He'll say this center is half an acre. That'll tell him what type of typical use needs that type of space. And so a good example was we had a hotel reach out to us recently interested in, in moving here. And one of the things Mike can do is look at available vacant land, undeveloped land. And he can look on his inventory and see this is two acres, this is three acres. So when you look at it, lodging needs, a hotel needs one and a half to two acres. Well, we have a piece of property in the area they were looking for and it's in that range. Mike knows exactly which project, uh, property to target then as a possibility. So Mike's already starting to build a lot of this stuff. And then of course zoning is a big deal because knowing the zoning helps you tell the businesses exactly where they are and what road might be a harder path than some, right? Some are permitted in some areas, it's special use. It's a, it's a longer process. So when doing business attraction, um, I said that we'll already create the inventory. We're going to try to keep an ongoing commercial building space in commercial property inventory. So one is vacant land. And one is a, a, basically an inventory of all the strip centers and what their spaces are in their centers. And when they become vacant, we'll know that, you know, this unit is 1,200 square feet. So we keep a running tab on that. Uh, this is just an outline of his, uh, strategy, which is, you know, these are the uses, these are, identify the properties. And as we said, these are the types of outreach, you know, cold calling is probably the least likely to result in something, maybe it's a, you know, if, if, we've said this before, if you're looking for an actual national brand, they're going to have very specific metrics before they look in an area. So they're going to know, you know, Costco knows exactly where they want to be and why they want to be there. But if you're calling a restaurant that has maybe two locations and they're looking for something west of the Fox River, they might be more likely for Mike to take a call and help guide them through our town and, and showcase what North Aurora is. That'd be your cold calling. In person would be where he actually visits these restaurants in those towns or whatnot and, and sees their operation and, and shows. And sees their operation and, and shows them spaces, um, that we have here. But the other thing is, you know, networking obviously, but marketing is big too. We're, we're going to be creating new marketing materials for the village that are going to have. Things like our statistics, our, our demographic breakdowns and. And all of our, um, information. So we can hopefully attract businesses. And then, uh, the big thing here is that this is just a, a breakdown of those, uh, different types of activities. So we also are beefing up our website to have its own individual economic development page. And we also have an advertising campaign. I, I don't know if you've seen it. We've already put it into, um. Effort. The first thing that we are trying to do, uh, we just promoted National Vodka Day on Friday. It was. You know, Natalie thought that was a good idea. And I, I said, okay, because we give liquor licenses, we have liquor stores in town and we have lots of restaurants that. Sell martinis. So she did it. And what's it supposed to do? Well, by putting on Facebook, we gave people a listing. Of all of our liquor stores that they can buy vodka and all of the restaurants that they can get a martini at, and then ask them. To engage with us and tell us where they like to go to have a drink in town. And of course we put drink responsibly on the. But, but I mean, we do that and it's things like that. I know the mayor has brought that up to me that, you know, he'd like to showcase local businesses more. Natalie wants to do more of those things on a regular basis, like on a schedule. So we can maybe get those businesses name out there. I think we're also looking to do more short videos because apparently those are the best ways for people to watch things. People like to see thirty-second videos as opposed to, um, reading. So we're, we're talking about engaging and doing some more short videos. And then as far as business retention goes. You know, this is kind of an outline of, of things we will do and, you know, prioritize outreach. Now that, I know this is really is what's my famous John Laskowski line. It's just big enough for no one to read it on the screen. So, you know, what, what we're looking to do is prioritize which businesses might want. Uh, village assistance or might actually want to engage with us with questions about how they can grow their business. And I'll give you an example. The auto mall is a, is a really good example of how. They came to us years ago when we were doing a road program and they wanted to create better cross, um. Cross access between, uh, their, their car dealerships. So what we did was we actually went in a road program and we broke the median up between the car dealerships. To purposely allow their driveways to connect. So now if someone leaves one dealership, they can just cross the street and they didn't have to do the huge loop. Didn't seem like a huge deal, like it's like an extra twenty seconds of driving, but. They felt that that was important to get people to just bounce business because it was convenient. And it cost us out of a road program that was probably, you know, two million dollars. It probably cost us twenty or thirty thousand dollars. To do an area that brings in more sales tax than any other part of our. So that's what you're looking for. You're looking for that feedback. How can we help your area grow? And those are things like the sign ordinance, like I wish I could put more signage up. Okay. Well, we'll bring it to the board. Um, I know the, where it says meet with high level individuals. One of the thoughts was that, um, the mayor was looking to do a, a program where we, we meet. And truth is, it's hard to schedule these things because people are busy and. Mike tried to reach out to a bunch of businesses to see if they wanted us to, to, to come in and visit. And he was having a hard time getting people to be like, yeah, come on in. So what we thought we would do is group it up by like, let's start with some of the ones that we know are bigger employers in town, things like that. And then go to them with, with questions and, and I'll get to that in a second about surveying. Um, things upfront that we, we say, hey, we want to just come meet with you, not necessarily to just see how your business is doing. But actually ask you very direct questions. So you can give us honest answers about your experience with us. And then I'm going to fast forward to the next slide. That's where the surveying comes in. And these are just, you put sample questions in there, but. You know, are you satisfied with our public infrastructure? That's an easy one, right? Do you think the roads sink or are they good? Do you, do you have enough water? Do you have enough water pressure in your area? Um, you know, are there additional things that we could do to help? And then, you know, what programs or services do you think a city should offer that we don't make more, make us more competitive? It doesn't mean that we are automatically going to do these things. It's just good to know that if they have a good idea. It might be something that we haven't thought of and we say, you know what? That is a good idea. Let's talk to the board about it. And then this is just how we do more of the business promotion. As you see, this is more, I wanted it to be more of a schedule. So that we don't let it fall by the wayside. So what we did was similar to the Tiff districts. We put a whole bunch of thoughts of what we can do and how often we would do. So that we can at least look like it's easy for me to go to Natalie. And say, Natalie, how often are you doing these things on the community sign? Because she has a schedule for all the slides that go on the sign. And then it's easy for Mike to send stuff out once a year. I know every June first, he's going to send the Tiff stuff out. So it's good that we just, it keeps us on a loop so that we're always making sure that we're keeping everything fresh. Um, social media is going to be our biggest thing probably. And like I said before. Um, when you look at those, those holiday or what we call the holiday posts are those. Uh, special ones like the National Burger Day or whatever. We want to do like one of those a month because it really just gives. Opportunities. The hard part is to try to spread the wealth to all the businesses. It's really easy to highlight National Burger Day or National Hot Dog Day or something like that. Which, which got to find is like National Flower Shop Day or something like that. There aren't many of those types of things out there. So. You don't want to leave people behind either. If they're specialty shops, we want to find a way to showcase them. And then this is just an example of the agencies that we'll be engaging with. And part of what Mike is already doing, he's, he, we're becoming more engaged with the Aurora and Batavia chambers. Um, even though Aurora serves the majority of the greater Aurora Chamber services, a lot of our businesses. The Batavia Chamber has definitely grown in our area over time because as you know, the village does not have its own chamber. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So whatever happened with the old UFC gym space?
Uh, there is somebody else interested in that at one point, but it then that gym.
That was signature fitness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was another gym interested, but then though I think we're having some issues as well.
Any questions on item three? We went up there. Very good. Got them two.
All right. All right. Yeah. I had all these PowerPoints and I don't know why that one didn't blow it up on my.
All that, that static.
I just assumed there was like a bird in the, it just sounded like something's like.
Like you're listening to some other.
Okay. So this, going back to item two, item two is our public works policies. Two years ago, we decided that we were going to create public works. I call them operational policies, but what was happening was. Wasn't comfortable with, I, in my job, I have to make discretionary dis. Decisions sometimes on things like the road program. You know, when we're going to do something, when we're not going to do it. Most of the time Brandon does a great job of handling that. And sometimes it'll get to Brian's level and then sometimes Brian will have to come to me. So what we decided to do was, I wanted to put things in writing. And it was mostly just to make sure that we were aligning with what the board wants to see in the public. And as we're going through this, we were talking about adding a couple of policies and I realized we didn't have a few on the books that we do every year like the road program. So we thought we would add. So here's, um, the changes that we, that we have proposed. And basically now we have a manual. And what's really nice about this manual is people like Brenda who answers the customer service calls at our, uh, front counter. She can now look at this. If someone asks like, I don't understand how your leaf program works, she can go to that and then reference the policy on the leaf. So with that. Okay. So I am not going to spend a lot of time in the road program because we just talked about it. Um, but there's your, your, you know, Brandon mentioned how we do the PCI. He mentioned, mentioned how we score our roads. Um, and, and you see there, uh, trustee Lowry, you asked earlier about how the PCI score and other criteria. Those are, there's your, your, your criteria, how we pick our roads using the PCI. And the most important thing that I always say is that they do an excellent job of trying to group roads together. Because it is for the convenience of the residents. If you're doing, it's cheaper too. If you typically do a bigger area because there's less mobilization all over town, but. At, at the top of that, we don't want to be in one neighborhood, do three roads. Come back two years later to do the other three roads in that neighborhood. We want people not to be hassled, do them all at the same time and get out of there for twenty to twenty-five. I'm not going to go through this because Brandon already went through how these are the PCIs. So here's the policy. So we basically put all the stuff I just showed you, how we pick our roads, that's in the policy. But the road program really encompasses four other aspects. The road program is the biggest program we do every year. It encompasses things like the sidewalk program that we already had a policy on. The curb and gutter replacement program, which we had a policy on. But grass restoration and driveway restoration, which we didn't have an official policy. However, it is. As everyone on the board is probably aware, those are the two items that cause the most complaints during the road program. Before I get to that. We also wanted to adopt our ADA compliance, uh, curb ramping in the policy. So. This is something we do here, but I want to just make sure that everyone's comfortable with how we do it. Uh, Batavia is a good example. I think Batavia does theirs differently. So when you, and it. Feel free to jump in and save me if I, if I get the engineering wrong. But when we do a corner. As you know, like because of ADA compliance, the slope of the sidewalk has to be at a certain pitch. So what ends up happening is if you notice in the road programs, a lot of times you'll see the, the intersections. You'll see the sidewalks completely redone in, on the corners. And that's because the last time those subdivisions were done, those sidewalk pitches were at a different ADA compliance level. So they end up having to take them out and then making sure they're repitched, which ultimately leads us to doing two things. One, we have to put in the detectable warning tiles. Those are those reddish orange tiles you see with the bumps. But the other thing that we do here is you have basically two ways to. Smooth the grade of the land next to the road, uh, the sidewalk. So think of it this way. To make the sidewalks, uh, uh, less of a steep slope. Yep. You sink them into the ground, which means the, the parkway grass is actually elevated slightly higher than the sidewalk is now.
Did you say warning tile or tires? It says tires on the.
Oh, it's a typo tile.
Tiles?
It's supposed to be tiles. Yeah. We can put tires out there if you want. It's supposed to say tiles. Um. But anyway, so like. Ends up happening is. We end up with like a couple inches of, of dirt and grass that is slightly higher now than the sidewalk. So case in point, when I cut my grass, I go over my corner. And my lawnmower goes up slightly as I go, it goes down to the sidewalk at the corner and then goes slightly up. The alternative to doing it that way where you grade it with, with like the way we do where we're ju, basically just grading the ground. Is to curb it. And that's what, I don't know if that's Batavia's policy, but I know they do it quite often. Brian and I were talking about that, but. We have some like that in our town too, because sometimes the grade has to be curbed just because it is. Too much of a drop. And then you end up having to curb it. But if you've never seen one, this is where you go onto a corner. And as you're walking on the sidewalk, you literally have curb on the sidewalk all the way up until you get to the middle square. And it's more expensive to do it that way. And I think staff just thinks aesthetically, it doesn't look as nice either. So.
Doesn't look as nice. I agree.
So like, yes, there is, and we do get this complaint very rarely, but someone will be like, well, now my grass is this much taller than my sidewalk. But the alternative is, okay, but you wouldn't have been, been able to even go over with the lawnmower because we would have had to put like a three inch tall curb. Along your grass and it would have looked.
It doesn't look good that way. It just looks out of whack.
But if that's something the board would like to consider, we can definitely look at that. Um, but right now we just grade it. So I just want to point out that that's what we do. That's what we put in the policy. Uh, so. Let's talk about those four subprograms. So the road policy, like I said, is pretty self-explanatory. The sidewalk repair policy is, like I said, it's primarily done, uh, what we used to do.
We skipped the grass?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was on the slide before.
No, it, it's, it's the last one.
Oh.
Uh, you want to go to the grass?
No, I just saw it on the slide before. It said grass. So I thought you jumped over it.
So, um, the sidewalk policy is. When we got here, we used to do it basically on planes. We'd put them on a list. We'd reduce the squares. And then we started putting. Money into it. Every year we put minimum fifty thousand dollars into sidewalks and we would replace as many as we could for that amount of money. Then we got to a point where we were doing so good and financially we could do it. We just said, to heck with it. We're just going to do. Whatever sidewalks need to be replaced every year in the road program, we're going to go through those neighborhoods. And if it's seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand. We're just going to replace those sidewalks while we're there because it's cheaper to do them all at one time. And we've been doing that now for probably, I don't know, six, seven years. And it's worked out really well because the number of sidewalk complaints we get. Are dramatically lower. And so that's one of our active goals is to reduce trip hazards or falling apart sidewalks. And so that's now in the, we put it now in the policy, its own policy that it's done. Every year, Ryan and his team, as they do already, check those neighbors that were doing the road program. It doesn't mean that we're only doing sidewalks in the road program neighborhood. If there's ones on the list that are, you know, like, oh, you know, that one's getting bad, it gets evaluated in two ways. Either sidewalk leveling or sidewalk replacement. Sidewalk leveling, if there's like a little bit of a lip, as the board knows, we do that annually. We hire a company to shave that lip down. And so you'll see that when you're walking, sometimes you'll just see the aggregate of a sidewalk tile that's slightly higher. Because it was shaved down. So it's a smooth transition to the next tile, but they didn't replace the whole tile. If it's really bad or the grade is steep and it's a trip hazard or like a bad one, they'll just replace the whole thing and put a whole new, uh, square in. Um, the curb and gutter is also an existing program that we do. Uh, but we wanted to point out in case the board was unaware, this is what we do. So this is. Um, typically the most commonplace you'll see, uh, a curb fail is by the, by the driveway because that's where the cars are driving constantly over the, onto the apron. Um, but what ends up happening is we do get complaints, believe it or not, some neighborhoods, I, is, if, might have heard at the groundbreaking earlier. Right? I was asking Brandon, for whatever reason, one or two neighborhoods might have. Curbs that three or four houses in a row just have a bad curb. And you don't see that often because curbs usually last because there's cement. But every now and then there's some that need to be done, but mostly by the apron. So what will happen is the resident will call and say. Well, what am I supposed to do? I have all this crap concrete. How am I supposed to like drive over it? It's, it's going to pop my tire. The apron's going to start to crumble. So what we do is we patch it, whether it's cement or asphalt, we'll patch it with asphalt just to make the transition smooth. And it's a temporary patch. And then when we do the road program, we'll add it to a road program. Because that's when we do all the cement work and then we'll just add it to the list of things to be done. So even if it's not in the road program neighborhood and it's like eighteen years until your neighbor is going to get the road program, we'll just put it on the list for one to be updated. We don't get a ton of complaints on that one, but that's also because our road program includes a curb and gutter replacement. And, and that's going to lead to this next slide. We don't always replace the entire curb. Like when I had my, my, uh, road done. A part of my apron driveway curb got replaced, but not the whole part. And so I ended up with a patch. So, uh, go to, oh. See, I was wrong. Grass was before, uh, grass was the next one. I'm going to skip back to grass. Sorry, mayor. So on the driveway, it would have been a better transition to go to this one. Uh, driveway restoration is, the new policy is. And this is where we wanted the board's feedback. Really it's the driveways in the grass. So with driveways, as everybody knows, the dreaded patch, right? So you, you cut into an apron, we patch it. Now, since we didn't have an official policy, this is a, a starting point. Um. We put in there, this is current practice right now. So let me go over what current practice is. Two patches are within four feet of each other. We usually do one longer patch. You've seen that where sometimes you'll have a patch on one side of the driveway, one on the other, but if they're close enough. We just think it makes it look better to have just a one long strip. So we'll do a whole strip. Where. We'll try to do it as we do try to patch with the same material in depth as the current driveway. Um, the sidewalk, curb and sidewalk replacement would typically result in an approximately two foot wide patch. So this is the dreaded. I got my sidewalk done in the middle of my driveway on my apron. And the village put a strip of asphalt on both sides of the sidewalk. And you know, Brandon can elaborate if you have questions, but that's because that's the forms they put in in order to cut the sidewalk out. That's the forms they put into then for the concrete back. Um, if there's original brick pavers, we do actually like take the pavers. The landscapers tend to put them to the side and they do try to put them back. Um, what we won't do though, and we've had this question come up, is we don't regrade for somebody. So like. If their driveway was sunken with pavers, we don't go in there and be like, hey, you know, you should smooth it out for us and make it all even again. We're like, well, we didn't cause it to sink. So you would have to pay somebody to do that. We're just taking them out and putting them right back in. Um, but the fifty percent, we threw fifty percent in. It's rare, uh, Brian and Brandon, you said that we don't typically get the fifty percent on aprons. So the question to the board is, um, and Brandon's got some numbers for you if you have questions about how much things cost. What is right now, what do you say the most, is it about forty percent, forty-five percent is about the most you see patch wise in an apron?
Yeah, it might even be closer to like twenty-five percent typically is the max.
So you really, when you put the, the fifty percent in, you're really being stingy? I was just kidding. Um, so that's the question. If only, if the apron's only twenty-five percent. The question to the board would be, when do you think we should replace an apron? That's the question.
Fifty percent or more.
Otherwise it just, otherwise it's just patching.
Right.
And the, the only reason I bring it to the board is because everything has a price and. You know, in a perfect world, we all want to give residents new aprons, you know, if we touch it. But at the same token, you know. You said the, uh, what's the cost if we did full replacement on the ones we touch?
Yeah, I mean, a full apron is, I mean, they obviously change in size somewhat, but you're probably looking eight hundred to a thousand dollars per apron. Do the full apron. So, I mean. Like this past year, I think we touched about like a hundred and eighty aprons in the project. So if you were to do every apron, I mean, you're starting to get up to. I think about a hundred and fifty thousand for asphalt aprons in a project. In this past project with the patching, we're about thirty-five thousand dollars. So it does add over a hundred thousand dollars. It's just that one project kind of is an example.
I, I have a question. Are there any steps we could take to minimize damage to the aprons to begin with?
Yeah, I mean, concrete aprons, they're able to usually minimize, just they're more rigid. They hold up better when you pull away the, the curb or sidewalk. Even then they may accidentally chip them, but usually that's. You can kind of patch those a little more. With asphalt, usually they, they're a lot thinner. And some of the stone will start coming out from underneath them. So you're kind of undermining the, the aprons and then. A lot of it depends on the condition of an asphalt apron, if it'll hold up. If it's only a year or two old, it may hold its structure. You could maybe. Pour concrete up against it and they do at times if they're able to pull it away cleanly, they'll try to do that. But then a lot of times with older asphalt aprons, they're not perfectly level anymore or they crumble off and there may be slight ruts that. And they do need to put form boards in and. Yeah. So then you start having to, to saw cut the apron away to fit those in and.
I think the frustration sometimes like. A couple of years ago, we instituted a policy internally where we said, a- and, and it's actually in here, but. Anytime that we know the road. So tonight you, you basically gave us the okay to go ahead with the next year's road program. So then we tell Nathan's department that anybody looking to do a driveway in that neighborhood. Tell them that the road program is coming through their neighborhood. They may want to wait to do their driveway until the following year, just on the. Offhand chance that we might actually rip up their curb and cut into their brand new apron. And so we do try to minimize it and yes, your heart goes out for the residents when they have like a three year old driveway and you've cut a patch into it. Because you're like, it's only three years old, but there are a lot of times too, that the aprons or the driveway might be twenty years old and they're crumbling. And so we're patching something that was already, you know, so that's a good question.
It's a hard call because it looks unsightly. Does.
Actually a saw cut in asphalt when you patch it, it's not really that bad. It matches. I mean.
That's only a little chunk, right? It's not usually half of it.
Yeah, it's simply like two feet wide.
I mean.
I think it would be nice if we could at least offer to the residents. An option to potentially pay for the other part or. Something like that, offer discount. Maybe you are thinking about redoing your whole driveway. Would that company be interested in being a part of doing that as well?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll defer, but it's been my experience when we've had this conversation, the, the contractors that are doing these. Projects don't tend to want to get into actually paving people's private driveways because of the amount of work, the, the size of their companies and what they do. So like what we find out a lot of times is they'll give the price that is just astronomically high. If someone calls up and says. Can you just do whole, my whole apron? It's the, I don't want to do a price. Mm-hmm. So, I mean, Brandon, you can, have you, do you know of programs where they include that option in like the bid package?
Yeah, I've seen some towns that'll offer their unit prices to residents, but you do get into. Kind of then the village having to administer collecting payments before work being performed. So there is like a lot of. I guess like staff time and kind of going around collecting checks.
Can you explain that? So basically the homeowner would have to pay the village first and then we would allocate the check back to. Then like the village.
I mean, if they said that they want to do it, they just have to pay for it at that point. Like you can't be like, oh, we're going to do that next summer. You have to be like, okay, well then by this date you have to pay, otherwise. You can't do it.
I think that's opening up a whole can of worms with the public and the village and. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. People get mad because it looks bad, quirky.
For the rest of mine to be done because I like, I think it'll look stupid.
I, I, I agree. A lot of people don't like it. We're, it's forty percent. Well, it's forty percent. Well, we, we, we only replace it if it's fifty percent. I mean, I think it's one of these things that it's just kind of a no, no win situation. Too, it's way too much money to say we're going to do the whole apron. Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by, is that what I calculated to what you said? Would, would be that much more had we done it this last year? So. I don't know. I think fifty, you have to draw the line somewhere. So fifty percent, two percent, more than you replace the whole thing.
What, what if we were to add a, something like based on the age of the driveway? Like say someone did replace it two years ago. And, you know, now we're hacking it up. You know, maybe, maybe we can make an exception for, you know, that type of situation, maybe. I mean. You know, if the homeowner didn't know or we, you know, that the. They're, they're going to get hacked up. I mean, and then they just paid for it.
Usually on newer driveways.
That would upset me. I mean, if I paid for it and then two years later my driveway's hatched up.
Usually it's.
Not going to happen a lot, but you know, maybe we can make certain exceptions for some of that stuff.
Sorry, I didn't know. But usually if it's new asphalt, it's not going to get chewed up as bad.
Yeah, but markets, it's, it's a cut and it's terrible. I mean, I do this, I do this every day. And it's. You know, it's not cheap. It's not cheap to replace your driveway. So. Like I said, maybe, maybe we can make an exception in that type of situation, but again, now you gotta have them prove that they had their driveway. Replaced, which hopefully they would have had a permit, obviously.
Yeah, for sure they would.
Yeah, I mean, that would be it. I mean, we would just, if the board wanted to do that, we would only do it if they had a permit on file.
Correct. Correct. But. Yeah, I, I can't imagine it's happening a lot, but. But on newer driveways, I think that's something I think we would owe to the homeowner, you know. Hey, we're gonna, you're gonna have two cuts now, especially if we do their sidewalk and their curb. Now you're going to have three sections of asphalt on something that maybe was just recently done. You know, maybe we can make an exception in that case, but. Yeah, I don't think there's any perfect answer to it, quite honestly. I mean, I, I, I would like, I think the idea of, I know it would be a headache, but I, I would like that idea of. We've been identified your house as one that's going to have a piece of the curb or the sidewalk done. So here's our policy. What we're going to do is patch it. If you don't want that patch, here's what it will cost. To have your whole apron done, if that's an option, if, if the contractor would want to do that or give a price for that. But then yeah, the, the homeowner would need to prepay. For that, you know, you give them up to a certain date and say it's this, either you're either going to get a patched piece of. Apron or you want a new piece, here's what the cost is. I, I, you know, my neighborhood was done this year. One of my neighbors asked the, the contractor to do their whole apron and. They're like, no, we don't do work for residents. So.
Um, yeah, because it's a different, yeah.
Yeah, no, and I, and.
Well, it's a bitted project.
That's probably the right answer. I'm, I'm, I'm actually happy that they said that because. You know, some of these, again, I, I deal with township stuff, but. Right. You know, you don't need Geneva constructions, you know, guys on the weekend will be like, yeah, give me five hundred bucks or give me two hundred bucks because they have all this. You know, spare asphalt left in the truck and they'll just do it. That puts the company in a bad spot too.
What about if they got a notice that their street's been repaired? Um, be aware that there'll be some patch work done. And if you're thinking of doing your driveway, kind of like what Steve mentioned, that may want to wait to do your driveway until after.
That's obvious. I think that's a no brainer that that should be.
You're already doing that.
Yeah, that, that should definitely be happened.
Uh, are there many people complaining that after the?
Yes.
About the patching? Yeah, the patching and the, well, the next one we'll go to the weeds. I would say if I had a. Would you say weeds or grass is worse than patching? About the same.
I'd maybe a little more on grass than. Patching.
But we do. That's the number one and two complaints we got.
So rope from. Repair the road, they complain about the apron patch.
And, and, and then the policy like I, and I didn't, it might be on the next slide, but. There were, there are very few times where we will replace a full apron. And so if you see here where it says may replace such thing as drainage. There was one situation this year that we replaced an entire apron and it was cement. And we had to because it was the only way the drainage for that flowed properly down the curb line to the sewer. Once we did the curb work, we had to repitch it. And so we had to rip up a whole bunch of it. But things like that happen and we, we make those, those are rare, but we make those discretionary calls once in a while. Um. But going back to this, I, I guess my only question would be is when you do secure the unit pricing ahead of time. Would the, a subcontractor, did they normally then give that to a sub or?
Um, so at another town I worked at, we did this program and we would just bid and the contractor had to. Do that work if we marked it essentially.
Okay.
So it'd be the same exact unit price the village paid. I think. The village that I worked for then added like an administrative fee on top of it. Uh, I mean, that's, I guess a policy decision.
May, maybe the contractor that's, or the, the guy that's doing the estimate for the company is going to price it out. But I can guarantee you that the crew that's doing the work would rather do the whole apron rather than. At here and a patch here and a patch there. I guarantee you, they would rather just rip the whole thing out. And put the whole apron in because it's way easier and quicker. Oh yeah, to match, to try to match the grade and you know, that's, it's not fun. It's not easy. So. But again, the person pricing it is probably has no idea that, that's, that's the case. So. I, I would love to see an option for a homeowner to say, hey, you're, you're going to have a. Ripped up apron or a patched up apron. If, if it can be part of the bid package, that'd be awesome.
Well, that's the thing, if they.
But I understand if they can't.
Like if you said, okay, we, we would like a price for just the patching or. What would happen if we just did all of the aprons? Like what would do that? What, what would that do to our price?
All of the aprons?
Yeah.
About a hundred and fifty thousand.
A hundred and fifteen thousand more.
No, I think it's more than that. How much it would be, but if you said, we're just going to do them all in the whole neighborhood. Easier? Yes. Is it really that much easier for your employees?
It's easier to do a whole apron.
Then maybe they're.
Doesn't mean it's cheaper.
No, I know, but maybe they're not going to be marking it up quite as much.
Right.
As what you think.
Well, I guess all we can do is ask, but I, I, I would love that. I would love to see that option for our residents because then you're putting it in their court. Like. You're going to have a patched up apron. Or if you'd like to pay, you can have it full. And then at that, and then at that point it's in their hands. Then there should be no complaint, o- other than they're going to say, well, we shouldn't have to pay for that. But at least you're giving them an option to then. You know.
That's true. And you're, you're giving them a bitted price.
Right. Right.
That doesn't mean they won't complain.
Right. I think, I think.
I think it will be a headache for the village.
Probably the best of all.
I think it'd be.
Other than replacing them all.
Well, you said replacing them all, but were you talking about everyone that we touch or the whole, every house in the road program?
Everyone that you touch.
Everyone touch. Okay. Don't think I had Brandon on that number too, though.
So what happens if you run every house number?
Yeah, I think it was like. Two hundred and ninety thousand.
Then you got to replace.
Concrete's easier to patch. And, and it looks, I mean, it looks clean.
Yeah, it does actually. I don't know, listen.
Yeah, I know the mayor's brought it up in the past, like the, I wish there was a better way to not have to even. When we do the sidewalks in between the driveways, that's what causes a lot of the problem because you have to cut into their driveways to get the sidewalks. It comes down to like, why does it always have to be two by fours? Why is that? Somebody come up with a new material where it doesn't take.
When they put, yeah, something different that they can slide metal in or I don't know, something that.
It's got to be two by fours.
I mean, they do use steel forms sometimes, but even then like you have to get. It wide enough because if you only have like an inch wide gap then, you can't really. Pack the asphalt back in there very well. So you want to saw cut it back so you can.
I was thinking like quarter inch, not inch, but then he's something, yeah.
They got to have is something to hold it. So I mean. You got to have a little work, you got a work area too. You got to like hammer it.
I heard a couple of ideas. Is there anything the board wants to discuss putting in the policy then? I mean, it sounds like there's some discussion about. Uh, putting the unit prices for asphalt and giving residents the option as part of the bid. Here are the unit prices. Yours is getting ripped up. You know, your unit price would be roughly eight hundred dollars. If you'd like your apron done, please turn.
This seems cheap. Eight hundred bucks.
For some people, yes, and for some people no.
Yeah, that was the unit price from this past bid that, I mean, every year it made. Sometimes the way contractors bid it, sometimes it's like thirty-five dollars a square yard, then the winning bidder the next year's fifty. I mean, so you, it's in a fluctuate obviously and. Between different bidders.
Would that not have some bidders maybe bid on it if they don't want to do that kind of stuff, driveways or?
I mean, I, I don't, again, they're. Scare anyone away from bidding our project.
I mean, they're already, they're already know they're going to cut into some driveways. So.
Yeah. I mean, the other town I worked at, we did it. I mean, I didn't, I think the unit prices were quite similar still to what we normally would pay. I mean, I think they. It just like kind of draws out how long it takes to do all the, if a lot of people participate, it just takes a lot longer for getting all the work done. Maybe a drawback too, but.
How many driveways you think, would you say two hundred or how many driveways on this last one?
This last one, we touched about like a hundred and eighty aprons. And I think there was maybe about three sixty to three eighty, like in the program area. It might've been a little higher than normal just because we did some areas that were like duplexes and townhouses where it had a lot more driveways probably. Per mile of road, but.
Okay, all those driveways that we touched, how many called and complained?
Uh, I mean, probably like ten to fifteen, probably called and asked. A lot of questions about it. And then, I mean. Then maybe like two or three that called back multiple times about it.
So about.
Seventy percent.
Or one percent of the people that were hit. Okay. Well. Maybe that one percent will pay their extra hundred dollars to get a. Full apron done.
Would that be a lot of staff time or something like that?
You know, I don't think it, I mean.
I ran like a program like that in another town. So the staff there at least. This, I don't think you would get a contractor to manage it. Like there, the staff person had to go meet with residents to measure their aprons. Provide them like a document that had the, the price. Um, then they. Like, I mean, I ended up going around collecting checks a lot of times because. People want it done, but wouldn't want to go bring it places. So we were accommodating.
So would that make a part of it? Is that?
Yeah. Say like if you were getting a patch in your driveway, there we would subtract out that from what the resident would pay. Yeah. So. I mean.
It's a lot of extra work for the village staff to be sure.
It is a lot of phone calls and like people want to meet with you in person to like go over things. So. I mean, it, it really, there I was the only person doing it. So it was pretty much almost the only thing I did at the start of the project for like weeks usually because. It's running for like all over doing estimates. Um, so and then people usually tend to wait until they see the work happening and then still want to. Participate in the program. So it's kind of scrambling around.
Well, that, that, that we don't do. And with Google Earth now, I don't know how long ago that happened for you, but. I feel like a lot of contractors now just look at images and come up with a, a rough estimate like.
Yeah, I mean.
With only like a hundred and eighty driveways, I feel like that should be their, part of their quote. Like it shouldn't be that big of a deal.
Like we're looking for a problem to have right now, the way this discussion's going. I think we, we've talked this to death at this point. Notifications are going to probably eliminate a large portion of the complaints. If we give people a year or two notice, say your block is going to be getting replaced, we'll notice there's going to cut back. On the complaints. And I like the idea of giving them an option. But right now it, I think we're just looking for a problem to have, to have ten lanes out of a hundred and eighty. I, you know, I think more, more people are happy to know that the road is being main, well maintained.
There's a lot of people that aren't complaining and calling that are still complaining.
Oh no, my neighbor is one of them. She had her, she had her driveway done and then the next year we had Dorell Lane got done. And she was like, nobody told me. I didn't know I would have done. And that's a great preventative measure. I'd rather be preventative and be proactive and it. Goodwill with the community. So let's, you know, whatever we could do to prevent it. If you guys would be extra careful so that we're not. Putting out big chunks of people's aprons. I mean, this is common sense.
So, you know, right now if someone comes in for a permit, this you start, we usually ask Brandon, um, April.
So, you know, right now, if someone comes in for a permit, this year start, we usually ask Brandon, um, April driveway permits come in. Oh, what's on this year's road program? We get a list and we, if permits come in, we say, try to flag it. Say, hey, you're on the road program. Um, but you know, to be earlier on that. So right now we're like, we're not sending a letter now here in October that next year, these are the roads on, but maybe you wanna send letters earlier.
Is there a page on our website that shows the road program and the maps and projections?
Uh, not typically because like we don't even know the road program officially until we meet with.
Well, I know it's not official, but the projections, I think that would help too.
What about when we do, when you do the newsletter, if you're looking for filler in the newsletter, say, you know, F reminder, if you're thinking about having a new driveway installed, please go to our website and check our road program.
The only reasons that you, one of the things I guess we're proud of it is like some towns will pick their roads three years in advance or whatever. Last time I was in had like five year road program and they kind of said, these are the roads we're gonna do. But things change and, and that's, and that's the thing like we, we dropped roads last year that were supposed to be done last year, but they, it didn't make sense to do them. Pumped them a year. And so that's the only thing. It's like some of those, if you put a, a road program out, these are the next three years, it may not be accurate.
Right.
So.
I think you could say that we're looking at doing these like in the next five, ten years.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we've been telling people, we've had calls from the Tanner Trail area and, and Lake Run and that area about the roads. And we knew that we were gonna be in that area for a long time. So we've been telling them for the last year, hey, the road program is gonna be in your area soon. And it's, we don't know exactly when your street's gonna be done, but expect it to be like a four year process, maybe five. So we've been telling people that for a while. Um, so I'm not sure where we're, if we want to add something or we are adding something. What was the decision?
I don't know that we need to add yet, but maybe can we at least maybe ask for when this upcoming round of bidding, if that's even an option to be included. I mean, that we don't have to change any policies yet, just see if it's an option.
My personal opinion is just that, I think that it just invites a lot of extra work for the village. You have to have a bid done in a certain way that seems complicated to me. I understand the premise of it. I, I like the effect you sent out, the notification. Maybe Todd had something where you say, you know, if, um, they had a driveway in the last one to two years, two years, they got it permitted, maybe somehow we, you know, help them out with the, the cost of doing all of it or something like that. But, um, just going to the homeowners and saying, you know, putting it in the bid and then what, what if they decide they don't wanna do it or I can't afford the four hundred or eight hundred dollars that it's my, to me, it just seems more complicated. A lot more work for the village staff to implement something like that. That's my opinion. Of course, that's, you know, entirely up to you.
Brandon was just gonna pawn it off the host way anyways.
Okay, well then.
These are civil engineers actually on the street during the road program.
Uh, to me, it just seems to create more problems than it's probably gonna solve.
We can definitely, we can definitely, um, look into it a little bit more and maybe ask the upcoming bid, just how that would work and see what kind of response we get. Um, I'm gonna go back, there's something about grass.
Here's the grass. That was a, people complain about the grass.
I complained about my grass. So yeah.
You know, so basically the, our, our existing practice has been for years, we've been using, everything obvi- obviously has to be I dot regulated as far as like the type of seed we use and everything. So we use all the, the, the seed that meets the specs that they have for different things. But then what we realized a few years ago was uh, I know the mayor's, uh, been big on it, was trying to use, yes, we still have to use I dot regulated seeds so that the bidders know what seed to buy. But we could buy better long quality seed, seed. So, so a few years ago, we started doing, put it this way, I dot does a lot of highway projects. That seed does not ne- necessarily have to be as, as nice as like the green grass you see in front of your house. So they have a couple of long quality type seeds. And we tried one a couple of years ago and then we realized that that one, and don't ask me to break down the, the type of seed that's in there, fescue and all that, but we ended up going to one that actually has like Kentucky bluegrass in it or something. So it's actually a, a neighborhood quality lawn seed the last couple of years. Whereas before, the other long quality seeds might be more salt tolerant, but we don't have a ton. It's not like they're on highways, so there isn't a ton of salt. So hopefully the seed has gotten better, but if from what I've been told for years, the cause of the weeds, and that's really the complaints we get is the weeds. The cause of the weeds isn't the seed, it's probably the topsoil and it's really hard to regulate where topsoil comes from. And know what's in, you know, what type of possible seeds are in the topsoil when you get it. So.
It's not from this topsoil, it's a lack of water. And then the weeds will just take over. That's the biggest problem. Todd can probably say the same thing.
Plant, yeah, planting grass in the middle of summer.
Yeah, is, and then it's ninety nine percent of people don't water it, but then they'll get on the phone and say, I got, you know, three foot tall, you know, weed out my.
Yeah, weeds take over then, yeah. No, lack of water.
I seen it on Facebook this, this summer. People are like they don't just like planting a parkway tree. Nobody waters them, you know, it's like, and same for the grass. It's like and putting sod down isn't the answer because they gotta water sod even more. So it's like either we water it or have a water truck or a college person or whatever, don't do the roads in, uh, July and August or whatever it is, but.
Well, so we, we put this as the talking point, but we definitely know that there's a different things that we've talked about internally. So just wanna point out, so what we do is in our current contracts, we do require topsoil erosion control, grass seed and fertilizing fertilizer to be done. Um, but going back to what you said, I mean, you know, Brandon has either worked or, or lived in communities that have sod or some that do, you know, seeds, some who there are some towns that don't do grass until the fall, like with their sod. But the only difference with that is you end up with weeds for like the entire summer because there is zero grass. You know, it's all gonna be sod. So it's dirt and weeds everywhere. So, I mean, it is the watering. So the issue is can you have a water truck do it? And you can do that. Brandon, you wanna talk about what you, the fluctuation in bidding and like how you said, like, like when you bid sod? You're explaining the cost per sod is sometimes watering's the hard part.
Yeah, so like the standard specifications when you're bidding per I dot with sod is includes watering for the first fifteen times. It's because it's known that you're gonna have to do that. Um, so when you get bid pricing on the sod, it already includes that, which you're looking generally compared what we've been paying for landscape restoration, it's gonna be double the, the cost to go with sod. Um, I hadn't really found, just, they do add extra watering to that usually in the bid. Seemed like a lot of bids that I've been finding of recent of other towns, the contractors putting a penny in for the additional waterings beyond fifteen. Maybe they're just thinking that they're not gonna have to ever use that and they're just trying to be low bidder. I mean, sometimes they just build it into their sod price that if they have to do twenty instead of fifteen, they're just covered. Um, so I didn't really find any towns that were watering grass seed to have bid kind of results to compare. It seemed like when people put more legitimate maybe cost into their sod watering. It was about like a hundred dollars per thousand gallons of water used. And kind of, I guess a rule of thumb is maybe about three gallons per square yard. So you're getting like a half inch of water each time you're watering on an area. Um, so maybe for fifteen waterings of projects, we had this last year, maybe in the ballpark of twelve thousand dollars. I guess fifteen waterings, if it's gonna be enough or not, probably isn't be a lot on the weather. So you're probably, I would guess probably starting around twelve thousand and up for possibly watering. And then that's like us, obviously, probably them filling up on like a hydrant with a, a meter included as well. So I mean, they're not paying for the water in that situation.
They don't put the blanket down, right? Everywhere. Says here, topsoil blanket.
Yeah, I mean, on our projects, pretty much everywhere is getting the blanket unless it's like some of the contractors' operations, the way they.
They didn't do any of it along the sidewalks and stuff. It's a foot.
If it's real narrow, they a lot of times won't put it. So, but if it's a bigger area.
Ever thought about hydro seeding?
I mean, the way the spec is right now, they are allowed to, but it doesn't require them. They have I guess multiple methods to, to do it. We could specify.
Still needs water.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
It sounds like water is the issue.
Yeah, still need to water it.
I had the blanket on mine and it, it was fine. So I did water it.
Yeah.
I think I saw Batavia recently had a project and they were hydro seeding on the side. I don't know if it, does it work really well though overall if it stays watered?
Yeah, I mean, we just, like I said, we just tried it.
You still gotta water it.
Still gotta water it.
Got that mulchy stuff.
Lack of water.
Is it, do we have summer crew that can do that or no?
Flowers. So I mean, they could possibly do, I mean, they have, their tank's actually smaller. So I mean, they'd be filling up.
Yeah, it's a tiny tank.
But, I mean.
Why, why don't we also incorporate a strategy of advertising, you know, on our Facebook, advertising on our webpage, if you have a blanket, you need to water it. You know, I mean, most people don't, probably don't know. I wouldn't have known. I don't know. I, I think it could be, you know, it's gotta be on the homeowner, it's gotta be on us. I, I'm not quite sure why we're having all these in-depth discussions about something as simple as weeds are due to lack of watering. Okay, how do we let people know you have to water it?
Why not have a flyer put it on the homeowner's door after you, if you put the seed down?
The reason why I have these discussions always because people are complaining. So that's why we're trying to resolve this because a lot of times people won't do it.
Yeah, you get a lot of people that say that's waste my water on watering the grass.
No, it shouldn't be, right? And you just said you didn't know what, what to do it. So some people don't, you know.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I didn't know that, that if, if, if they put seed and I didn't water it, that weeds would overtake it. And I guess if I really thought about it, but I didn't. But I think you can put a notification on the flyer on the homeowner's door.
Just like when they get a tree.
In order to keep, whatever, you know, an informational flyer. You just put it on the door of the, of the home that you, you put the seed down on, on the actual corner. I don't know, I guess the, the homeowner who's on the corner, but, and then at least you forewarn them that if they don't, you know, water it, then that's what's gonna happen.
Is it in the, is it in the preliminary flyer? I can't remember off the top of my head. Cause we talk about all the things that might happen in the road.
Well, I didn't know that they were be weeds.
Do you have any callbacks to go out?
Yeah, I mean, every year pretty much we make a punch list that they have to go add more seed. So yeah, usually it's not like. I mean, year to year it varies. Yeah, I mean, you're probably more like twenty or so percent I'd guess of locations need to be redone. I mean, some years like, uh, last summer, I think we hardly had to do any that this, I'm sure this year we will. And a few years ago it was like probably higher than ten, twenty percent. So.
I know I was on Lindsay Circle the one year in the soil, those like golf balls. Pretty hard to grow anything in it. So times are yeah, I'm now for letting people educate them if that's, you think that's gonna solve it, you know? But.
Well, at least if you inform them, they can't say they didn't know and they have the opportunity to take care of it, right? Um, it's not asking them to water an entire lawn necessarily. You're just asking them to water a little patch. At least let them know. I guess. And then they be aware that if they don't water it, then there's gonna have weed, they're gonna have weed there.
So it needs like a water, so they need to know that it needs to be watered more than once. It's gonna keep watering it. There's people, they go, I water them, you know?
It's gotta be water daily.
Yes.
Right.
Sometimes twice a day.
You know, just for best, you know. Best chance to avoid weeds, whatever, whatever you put it. It needs to be watered.
Yeah, with that, that's the cheapest and I think improving the seed is good. You know, all the things you've done.
I think improving the seed is, because I know that the year they did it by mind, there was, there were three feet weeds on the corner. Because that's right, nobody watered it and it was, it looked really bad for probably two seasons going. But it sounds like with the Kentucky grass, it's gonna make a big improvement over what that was that year. Um, and then you let people know to water it and then, then we see where we go from there. Seems reasonable.
Pretty good on that.
Good on the grass. Alright, and then the loss policy is not related to the road program. It's a tree trimming policy and currently, as you know, we have all these different things that we do. Um, as far as going around, normally what we've done in the past is cut the trees in road program neighborhoods. But as our town has matured, the trees have matured at the same rate basically. So we have a, a lot of our town is coming mature at the same time because it was all built in the same. And with that, we're falling so far behind on tree trimming. It's becoming a, probably the number one resident complaint we have now is I need my tree trimmed. Um, we had a list at one point that had two hundred people on it over the last few months, people calling and being like, I need my tree trimmed. So we've said, how can we do a better job of trimming our trees? And so you know, I said, one thing is throw money at it. That's, that helps, right? Just hire more contractors to go out there and do it, but they want big neighborhoods. It's, you get a better price and it gets faster if you just do whole neighborhoods at a time. So what we did was Brian put out a bid just to see how it would work as, and the board approved it a few weeks ago and they've already started. But the idea was if we have ten thousand trees in town, why don't we see if we can put them on a rotation where we do, uh, just an ignored an amount of trees. Let's do, you know, fifteen hundred trees, two thousand trees here and see what kind of pricing we got. We got really great pricing this year. So what we did was we redid the policy to basically stop saying that the road program dictates where the neighbors are gonna get their trees trimmed. And basically what we're doing now is we divided the town into seven areas and every area will be on a, a rotation of every seven years. Now, just like the road program, there might be a time that, uh, you know, area seven is up for, you know, improvement. But maybe you look at those trees and be like, part of area seven looks like it's still pretty good, but part of area six is really bad. And you can kind of move them a little bit, but it helps us make sure that every year we have the resources financially to keep up with our trees. Everyone can, residents can still call in. Todd is, his, uh, Todd, our foreman, has been working like tirelessly to get that list down. So out of those two hundred, a hundred of them ended up in the program that's being done out in Tanner and Lake Run and Mirador and like in, um, Remington. So they're already gonna be taking care of in the next week or two or, you know, next month or two. The other hundred, last I heard, they got it down into the forties. So they're doing the best they can. I know trustee Lowry, you called me the other day, they were in that neighborhood and they took, I think, five trees down that day. So sometimes they go out there, the trim, sometimes they'll take down because part of the list is also removals. So we're doing a better job of doing it now to catch up, but now we wanna make sure that we're ahead. So, you know, going through, I just wanna point out, this is what we already do. So when we do treat, uh, we do get complaints. People, not many, but people will call and say the trees look like they got butchered. A lot of people don't, they call, they, they don't like the, sometimes we call it tulipine, but when they trim the trees real high, but they do the fifteen foot clearance on purpose so that trucks and everything can get underneath it.
People can see our signs and, yeah.
Yeah, and, and generally we, we trim fifteen feet tall. Diameter inch, the tree has to be at least three inches in diameter and size. So that could be a pretty small tree still. Um, the big thing too is not every tree can be trimmed fifteen feet tall, right? Some trees might qualify, but they're only twenty feet tall overall or, or sixteen feet overall. So what they do is the arborist that we hire, they do a pretty good job with Brian of identifying like, hey, this tree, we made it fifteen foot height, it would look like broccoli. So we're not going to do that. What we're gonna do is we're gonna truck this way and Brian's guys work really well on making sure that it takes place. So that's fine. The reason why it's a new policy is because when you're starting to do the seven year rotation, it's gonna be more resources. If we put everything on a rotation right now, when I started here, I think we had tree trimming contract, the tree trimming was twenty five thousand dollars a year. It's ninety thousand a year now. And I wanna increase it to around a hundred and fifty thousand a year. So it's a significant expense, but it is the number one complaint I think we get from residents. So I, this is Brian's hand drawn map. So he basically colored the areas, but this is just to show you what Brian was thinking. Um, you know, what he did was he looked at the areas and he tried to group them by last time they were trimmed. Areas that seemed like they were built at the same time. And what he came up with was he went around town and he color coded neighborhoods. And then internally, we'll just have this on a list of, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but right could be year one, it could be year two, whatever. And it just simply goes on that rotation. And if you notice, they're not all right next to each other. So, but they are grouped. So, you know, right could be a whole neighborhood on the west side. It could also have a neighborhood on the east side. And part of that reasoning is, is just because as long as you group them, you still get a good price. Um, but it just might make sense that those trees are right to, to trim at that same time.
Ryan, do you have? Yeah, so like if you see this map right here, so that, that orange section is basically one section. And in that section, there's thirteen hundred trees. So in that program, we would trim thirteen hundred trees. And that area for like thirteen hundred trees, if we're going by a certain price, it would add like seventy five thousand dollars to the, to the, above the ninety thousand dollars that we currently budget. We, we tried to keep the, the areas between like basically like twelve hundred and fifteen hundred trees. You know, so it's manageable. And then the price range depends from like, like fifty five to like ninety thousand dollars depend upon, you know, if it's closer to the twelve hundred or the fifteen hundred. Plus it also depends on like the size of the trees. Obviously the smaller the trees, we can get a better price because they can. Or the fifteen hundred, plus it also depends on like the size of the trees. Obviously, the smaller the trees, we can get a better price cuz they can buzz right through the taller the trees.
You're saying potentially thirteen hundred trees, but maybe only seven hundred need to be trimmed.
Thirteen hundred is in that total, is in that area. So there might be a couple hundred that are below the three inches, so those wouldn't necessarily.
Or some of the neighbors trim up themselves. Not every tree needs to be trimmed, right?
I mean, that, you know, that'll, you know, kinda skip those and.
Now, who, who looks at that then? The contractor or you guys know or?
Yeah, so basically what I, we just put a, a bid together and we say, you know, any tree, three inches in diameter.
Um, will be trimmed to this specification. I don't tell them the number of trees in there cuz I, you know, I don't wanna sell them. There's, there's. A thousand and also they're like, oh, you're wrong. There's, so it's, it's their job to physically.
Count, count the trees, see which trees need to be, you know. So this year, when we got our bids for the, for Tanner, the, the, the price is ranging from like thirty six thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. So I mean, it was a, a huge range in the prices. So, um, so that's why it's hard to sometimes like put a, a number on an average number because. It really, you know, isn't an average number. So we, we just, we just kinda picked up, uh, meet, you know, the median and use that as our, like a budget number.
I think the most important thing is not only do we now have Brenda and Angie and Melissa, who take the majority of the phone calls. And they come to my office and say, Steve, we got more complaints about the tree lists. And I'm said, we're working on it, we're working on it. They can at least go to that list now. And tell people, hey, your area was done two, three years ago. It's not due, but if your tree's bad, it's not saying that we're not gonna go back out there and check somebody's tree. There's still individual trimmings that we'll do. So if people still calling their tree and they're not up for the full neighborhood to be done. It still goes on the list for Brian's crew to check it out. And if it needs to be trimmed, it'll still be trimmed. But by keeping this rotation, we expect that the internal list will be so much smaller. That the delay of, you know, I put my tree on a list six months ago will be like, I put my tree on a list, you know, hopefully six weeks ago or less, you know, it, it, it should greatly reduce the amount of.
I'm in favor of the idea. I think it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea. So that's it.
All right.
You wanna come find some more policies?
Nope, we're good.
Nobody's laughing.
Right, so we'll need a motion to adjourn, adjourn the exec session.
Motion to adjourn to go to exec session.
The bargaining and pending litigation. First, hey?
Hi.
Goals, all right. Thank you.